Have everybody. Our meeting back to order. Item 11 under new business, item A, resolution.
Mr. Hayes, can we skip to item B first? I know someone has to leave.
No problem, because I know there is a lot of concern, particularly in the chocolate milk area.
I want to make sure she's here for this entire discussion. I don't want her to have to leave and miss out on any of it.
If there are no objections from our fellow board members, we will skip item A and proceed directly to item B, which is our... Are there any objections?
No, I can't wait to hear what Dr. Hickey has to say.
We'll skip to item B, bread, dairy, and low-fat ice cream product contract. Appendix in, Ms. Hayes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Requested the board approve the bread, milk, and ice cream contract.
So both.
Second.
Now, I know we have some questions. Are there any questions on the contract or the products involved in the contract?
There's no questions. I'm actually amazed that the low bidder for the ice cream was Hershey. Finally, finally a food that we're purchasing that someone's heard of. I think we could be confident that Hershey will make a decent ice cream.
I didn't know there was a Hershey Ice Cream Company.
Is a Hershey everything?
I mean, I've heard of...
It's chocolate.
I've heard of Blue Bell, but I've never heard of Hershey Ice Cream.
I'm sure Hershey's going to be delicious.
Do they make flavors other than chocolate?
Perhaps we can get you some at some point in the next board.
Is there anyone in this room who doubts that Hershey is going to be a good ice cream?
Quality control testing.
We'll have samples for you at the work session.
Okay.
That's all he was getting at.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a dissent. Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And B is passed. Thank you. Now, we'll back up to item A. Resolution regarding implementation of Common Core state standards in Cedars, appendix M, Donald Hayes. Let me first kind of offer a little history as to how this resolution came about. And I'll preface this by saying that I am in no way advocating that our school system attempt to opt out of the Common Core standards. But having said that, what brought this about was, I go to a lot of meetings. I was at a meeting about three weeks ago now, I guess it was, and the North Carolina Education Alliance was there and they put on a program about Common Core. And I'll be the first to admit, I didn't feel I was that knowledgeable of Common Core other than what the superintendent had shared with us. And that's what I have relayed to people. And I try to inform myself as best I can. But I think it's one of these things, in a sense, sort of like global warming. I think it depends upon which expert you ask as to whether or not we have global warming. And I have really been amazed at the presentation that night by the North Carolina Education Alliance and the questions that were asked when the presentation was over. And then with the reading that I have taken upon myself for the last three weeks to read, which I'm not going to get into tonight, because here again, I think it depends, you know, which expert, you know, you want to talk to. And the only... And I did talk with the people with the North Carolina Education Alliance, and that's where the idea of a resolution came from, because I honestly feel that as a member of this Board of Education, that if I have concerns, if I have questions that have not been answered, then I know other people do also. And this is something that is moving forward. So the... I did talk with these people and I said, "Well, I would not be comfortable with any type of a resolution that would specify that we were trying to opt out." I said, "But I have no problem, because it's happening across the country as we speak, that states that initially approved of Common Core are now having second thoughts. Some are opting out, they're backing up on what they wanted to do. Some are opting out, from what I understand, about the testing areas." So there's a lot of concern, confusion, the... And I really don't want to get in unless the board wants to. We can get into various points of concern that I have and that I've heard since then. And I did mention today, and I don't want to get into a discussion there, but where the Lieutenant Governor has submitted, and I don't think he personally wrote those questions, but anyway, there were 67 questions submitted by the Lieutenant Governor to the state superintendent that they want answers for by August 20th, which is the next meeting of the State Board of Education. But there's just a lot of unanswered questions. And some of the categories that I had made a note on was, you know, the... Well, for example, one thing that kind of caught my eye right off the bat was the... In the language arts area, as far as, you know, depending on which expert you talk to, some will tell you, "Well, we're lowering the bar." Some will say, "No, we're not." And I don't think anybody's opposed to having standards. I don't think anybody has expressed that to me. But there are some that feel standards are being lowered, and they get into this area of the text of what is considered informational, what is considered, you know, the classic literature like we used to have. The percentages, from what I understand, in the elementary schools was to be like 50-50 informational versus the other texts. On the high school level, I think it'd go up to 70 percent of informational. And there are those that say this waters down the curriculum. There are just so many facets that I really won't get into all that, you know, unless we, as a board, decide to do that tonight. But anyway, this... That's how this resolution came about. And since I didn't have a lot of good answers, I personally feel, as I stated earlier, as a member of the board, that I think, I think we should slow down or say, "Okay, you need to provide these answers to people across this state as to what we're... What this is all about, what it's going to cost us," which, from my understanding right now, testing figure I heard was like $10. But what's being developed might go up as much as $27 per student. And there's talk about, "Okay, now, who's going to pay for this? Our local unit's going to pay for it? You know, where's this money going to come from?" And that's why some states have opted out, from what I understand. There's also questions about the technology involved as far as administering these tests, the bandwidth involved to do all these tests. So there are just so many concerns. That's why I thought it was important that we, as a board, because people looked at us, they asked us questions. And, you know, here again, I can quote a lot of different people. In the math part, for example, I had a conversation this morning, and there was only one person that I'm aware of from North Carolina that was involved in the math part of this thing, and it was a doctor from North Carolina State University. There's another individual that I've been reading a lot. She developed all of the literature. Her name is Dr. Sandra Stosky, for example, Senior Associate Commissioner of the Massachusetts Department of Education. They have a very good department up there. And in charge of the development of their English Language Arts standards, and she will not sign off on what is taking place now under Common Core. So with all those things in mind, that's why I thought it would be prudent on the part of our board to look at this, if the board is comfortable with telling the state, the state board, that, "Look, you know, there are a lot of unanswered questions here. You really need to address these. That's all that I'm simply trying to do, is have them answer these to the satisfaction of the people of the state." Now, having said that, I'll throw it open.
Well, Chairman Hayes, you bring up a lot of good points. And, you know, I, like you, had not really a complete understanding of what exactly Common Core was and what the impact was going to be on our education system. And I think the standards were passed back in 2010, I believe, or adopted by our state. And we're kind of just now seeing what that impact is and what that means. The concern that I had, you know, as a parent with children in the school system, is, you know, these standards haven't been field tested. They haven't, they haven't been floated out there to ensure that, you know, that the standards that they say are going to raise achievement are actually going to do what they say they're going to do. And I think we owe it to our teachers who are holding accountable to these standards and to our students in our care to ensure that those standards are going to do what they say they're going to do. And you bring up the cost of testing. And I'll say, as Dr. Hickey mentioned earlier, you know, we continue to work under limited resources. And the more money we have to spend on additional testing is less money we're able to spend on teacher salaries and in the classroom where it belongs. So, you know, there's so many unanswered questions at this point. I think it's, I think it's prudent to step back and pause and say, you know, "Is this really what we want to do and how we want to move forward in North Carolina?"
Well, Mr. Hayes, this is a draft proposal. I would say that I would like to defer this until the work session so that we can work on our own wording. I have Mrs. Koval use that word at the bottom of the last paragraph. Pause. We endorse or approve this resolution. It's going to send the message to our teachers, principals, students, and community that we're asking them to put things on pause until these questions have been answered. We can't do that.
What... You said the Lieutenant Governor has submitted questions to DPI. He expects an answer to when?
August 20th was what I read online, because that's the next meeting of the State Board of Education, and he has posed these questions. And there are many questions that I've kind of mentioned tonight.
Well, yeah, but, you know, your questions have all come from the North Carolina Education Alliance. I mean, I guess the question becomes, what does DPI say about, about some of these things?
Well, but that's...
That's the point. They don't, they haven't said anything.
Well, but now, I mean, I think they're going to have to respond to the Lieutenant Governor.
But my concerns are not coming from the North Carolina Education Alliance. They initiated, you know, the conversation that night at that meeting, which then I went and researched in reading various individuals that day.
Well, for example, I mean, I agree with, a little bit with, here with Ms. Nichols, because, you know, the resolution says that New Hanover County Board encourages North Carolina State Board of Education, North Carolina General Assembly. I mean, you know, they, they were in a position to stop this if they wanted to, to pause the implementation of such standards and assessments by engaging a full public discussion. I'm not exactly sure what they mean by that. And by launching a public study across the state as soon as possible. Study of what?
It's not a good resolution.
Well, I think it's answering... Of course, we can change this. Like I said, it's a draft.
I think she embraces a very good thing. This is, this is a boilerplate resolution. And, you know, while I don't have a problem with saying that we have, you know, if we wrote a resolution that said we have some concerns about the cost, about the implementation, about the intent, that we would like to have, we encourage the State Department of Education to address prior to implementation. You know, I don't have a problem with that, but I, you know, some of this stuff, I'm just not exactly sure what it's saying.
Well, I think what you're saying is basically what, what I'm trying to arrive at, in that there are a lot of unanswered questions. And like I said, this was a rough draft. I asked him to send a draft. And I think everyone had read it, because someone made a comment on, there was a typographical error in here. I don't know if that was fixed or not. But I think that the point is that I'm trying to get across, and I think the people that I have talked with in the alliance, there are so many unanswered questions. And really, it's a shame at this point in time that there are all these unanswered questions.
Well, that's true, because it was piloted before 2010. And we started last year, and so we're really getting into it this year. And that's what bothers me. We say the word "pause," and these teachers are going to be so confused. They are, they've studied over the summer, they plan on how they're going to do it.
All this resolution says is that the new Hanover County Board of Education has some concerns that we feel need to be addressed. It doesn't impact, you know, the Common Core standards that have already been implemented, everything that's taking place. But we just have questions. We don't have that kind of authority, quite frankly.
No, we don't.
There's no way we can...
So all we're doing, all we're saying is to our state legislature that we've got these, we encourage or we support the questions that are being asked and being raised about Common Core and what that impact will be on, in the classroom.
And that's what I'm...
And that's really all it says. I mean, that's all the resolution basically says.
And that's why I'm saying, let us write our own resolution. To me, this is, as Mr. Higginson pointed out, it's not clear. And this is a lot to endorse. And we don't have... I don't have enough background information. I didn't hear all of these people who were...
Let's give a little background context in terms of where we're at. Common Core standards were developed through the Association of Governors. They were concerned that students, given the high mobility, given the need to compete with economies around the world, that we didn't have a good unifying set of standards nationally. And so they developed Common Core standards, particularly around English Language Arts and Math. They also discovered that, and this goes to the issue of informational versus literature. When it comes to text reading, informational literature, textbooks, blueprints, require actually a much higher level of understanding. There's a, there's a quantifying thing called lexiles, which is readability. Most informational texts are at a much higher lexile or readability level than literature-based text. And you're talking to a kid who grew up reading literature. But our kids are struggling sometimes with those informational-based texts. And so that's why that particular standard is in there. You need to separate the testing piece out from Common Core. The standards themselves are, have been, were nationally-vetted standards. Now, there are some, definitely some issues with assessment. But we already do assessments statewide, and the state pays for those assessments. So Common Core assessments aren't on top of the old EOC assessments, they're replacing those assessments. So the cost issue's a little bit of a red herring.
Well, now, what is the cost now?
How were the standards nationally-vetted?
Yeah, you look like... She asked about national vetting.
How were the standards nationally-vetted? He asserts that they were.
When the governors came together, they brought their, all their standards. And then they, like, like Dr. Markley said, they talked to the professionals in the field of what exactly were being taught, what was being taught across these two subjects, language arts and mathematics. That's how it was vetted out. So...
Well, but for some states, these standards are actually a downgrade.
Now, because what you, what was happening, particularly in North Carolina, is we were trying to teach everything. And it was the old analogy, the North Carolina curriculum was a mile wide and inch deep. We wanted a curriculum that went deeper in terms of what you're getting into in terms of those standards. And so it wasn't just simply a recall knowledge of facts, but that you had to be able to analyze, interpret, apply those standards. And not just simply be able to recite facts. And so what they've done is they've taken those standards and they have drilled down deeper into them.
And they brought in teachers across states to look at the standards. It wasn't just top-down. The teachers were looking at what they had, what content they were going to teach, and how much information that...
Well, I'll tell you...
Teachers have often complained that we...
Well, I know. I mean, this is a big discussion, but nationally, there are many states who are opting out of Common Core. So the concerns I'm hearing from fellow board members are not sort of outlandish. I'm not an educator, but I spent a whole lot of years in education and being taught by educators. And I think educators will agree with the, this is the, you know, the teaching method of the day. I mean, how many teachers have been doing this for 30 years and, you know, one year they decided, "We're going to teach this entirely differently." And they did it for a couple of years, and they found it didn't work, and they went back to the other way they used to do it. The interesting thing, and again, there's a lot of questions with Common Core, but in terms of the, you know, I'm not going to say the Association of Governors didn't come together and they didn't bring education experts, but it hasn't been vetted. It hasn't, I don't think anyone will say that it's been shown to actually work. I mean, the interesting thing would be, why didn't we pick a system like Massachusetts that was shown to work experimentally? That we, this was a, you know, a good system, and why not, you know, adopt that nationally? Or look at one of the, you know, PISA countries and say, "Okay, well, this is their curriculum that has been shown to work. Why don't we adopt this and tweak it by 15 percent if that's the magic number they want to tweak things?" I mean, again, I think one of my concerns, you know, just as a, as a parent, is that we're adopting this new curriculum that hasn't been tested. And, you know, my children are the guinea pigs for it. And so if we find out a couple of years later that it isn't successful, well, then, you know, the couple of years our kids have missed. And again, I...
There's nothing in these standards that really are a huge leap from current standards. What they are is a deeper look at the standards that are in place. These aren't the instructional practices of how we teach the standards, it's the underlying standards that we teach. It's not like, this isn't saying we must go to open classrooms, which was the '60s fiasco. This is saying that if we're going to teach language arts, these are the standards we're teaching. How we teach them, the instructional practices, that's a discussion we have locally in our, in our schools.
And when it was piloted, those were the questions that were asked. How is this going to be better than what we're already doing? So when the 115 superintendents signed off on this, then therefore, those of us, it's our job to implement. And each summer, we've sent a team to go be trained. What are we doing differently? How is this better than what we were already doing? And like Dr. Markley said, we're taking out some of the fluff, because some of the things that were being taught, the students would even ask the question, "What difference does it make? There's no relevance to this in my life." Those are the kind of things that we're looking at.
They can say that about a lot of things, particularly classical literature, things of that nature, which is one of the complaints that people have on here. That a lot of that has been eliminated. The phrase I've heard is, "They're watering it down."
Well, the limited and being taken out, what had happened was it was cut down, that a teacher couldn't teach Shakespeare all year, that there's other information that these children needed to receive. Rich literature, and high school teachers, you know, who were really married to that, did have some complaints about it. But as we grow and as we're trying to be competitive globally, the kids need a little bit more than just reading Shakespeare all year.
Well, I'm not saying that they don't, but I think when you look at 70 percent versus the 30 percent on the high school level that can be instructional like that, that's just making up whatever you want. I think the other literature is going to suffer. And a problem I have, because here again, it's just like which expert you want to bring in. I go back to this lady that was the commissioner of the Department of Education in Massachusetts that I don't, I think they, we all would agree they have a very good system. She won't sign off on this. She says no.
But the states that are opting out or dealing with Common Core aren't arguing the standards. Most of them are opting out of the issues around the testing piece. And I would contend that there are some serious concerns with the testing aspect of this in terms of, here's a system, we want kids to be, think deeper, evaluate, and do these things, and we want to assess that with a multiple-choice test. You can't, you can't assess those kinds of skills in the multiple-choice test. And so a lot of states are opting out of this. There became two consortiums that were creating tests nationally. And so folks are opting out of those national testing consortiums because they have concerns with the testing model, not with the standards. Now, if you wanted to pass a resolution about testing and about some of those aspects of it, I think you'd get probably unanimous support. Separate the standards from the testing issue. They're two separate issues.
Well, but I think there are concerns about the standards also and about many other facets of this, as far as information gathering, what's going to happen to the information. It's amazing to me when you read through and see all the information they're going to collect on our children, K through 12, and they're...
And that's an aspect of Race to the Top, which is not a Common Core standard issue. That's an, the collection of information around that was a federal directive under the things in terms of what they were doing with Race to the Top, not dealing with the standards.
No, but as part of the Common Core is that all this information must be collected.
No, it's not part of Common Core, that's part of Race to the Top.
Why they...
Race to the Top is the federal piece of legislation when they came in, when they poured a bunch of dollars in. That, that's, Common Core is not a federal government initiative. It's a, it's a, it was a governor's initiative, not a federal initiative. Now, Race to the Top is a federal initiative.
I know, but did a single state get Race to the Top funds that did not pass Common Core? I mean, you know, it's sort of like, it's not, I mean, I agree with you. It's, I'm not disputing anything you're saying, because it's technically, you know, not part of Common Core, it's part of Race to the Top. But only states that adopted Common Core got Race to the Top funds. So then it's kind of, you know, it's a, it's a cart and a horse question. You know, if, if you don't adopt Common Core, we're not going to give you Race to the Top funds. Well, Race to the Top funds require you to, you know, implement this data collection service. So, I mean, are they related?
I would have told you, adopt Common Core and send the Race to the Top dollars back, but that's...
What now?
I would have kept Common Core and not taken the Race to the Top dollars. The strings that have gone with the Race to the Top at both the local and the state level aren't even related to Common Core. They're just the amount of information gathering that goes with it. When you look at the Race to the Top plans, they're not, they're, they're not connected necessarily to state Common Core standards.
Well, I think the intent of, what I was really trying to do was somehow send a message to the state that, you know, me personally, I don't know how the board feels, was that there are so many unanswered questions, which here again, I think is a shame, at this point in the game, that there are so many unanswered questions and so many people, knowledgeable people on both sides of the issue, so to speak, that disagree and that now states are beginning to back out. I mean, why are they doing that?
But both our governor and our state Chamber of Commerce have endorsed Common Core standards.
When was that?
Chamber came out this week, and the governor had a speech at the Chamber event this week, endorsed the standards. Now, he had, he had issues with testing.
Is that the same speech where they put in like $24 million for this thing, and then they're going to have $6 million for this teacher thing? Because I've already been told that might have been a mistake, what was said at that meeting. If that's the meeting, I'm thinking about the speech he gave.
He gave his educational speech at the Chamber earlier, late last week.
Yeah, there might be some changes coming on that, but another one you're talking about.
Well, the other thing is too, and again, if you don't endorse the Common Core standards, you're not going to get the rest of the Race to the Top funding. Also passed within the budget this year is that the, it's passed, that we're not, the state of North Carolina is not going to spend any additional money on testing unless it goes back and is approved by the state assembly. So, I mean, you know, on the one hand, you're endorsing the Common Core, and on the other hand, you're passing in your budget that you're not going to spend any more money on it. So, I mean, you know, what, what do you believe? Someone speaking at a meeting or what they actually plan on spending their money on? You know, I, so, well, I think, I mean, again, this is just me speaking. You know, I think we can wordsmith this. Sounds like people have some concerns and, you know, I'm not against the board passing a resolution expressing concerns. But if people want to spend some time actually talking about this at the work session and taking out things which they find objectionable and changing words around, I mean, you know, I don't think this is a, something we have to pass tonight.
Well, no, it's just, after that meeting, I felt so strongly about it that I thought, here again, it's a shame that all these questions are unanswered at this point of implementation. And I don't want to send a message that we're trying to opt out or whatever, but I, but there's a lot of teachers agree with that, though, that they're confused also as to what's going to be required, the testing elements. There's just quite a bit that, frankly, I'm surprised that all that confusion is still there.
Well, I agree with you. I mean, I've actually tried to research this stuff, and I still don't know, you know, how it's, how it's better. So, I mean, again, I think we can come back to this if the board wishes. I mean, it's up to the rest of the board, I suppose. It's my opinion.
Does he step in the comments, or are you in agreement that, because we can certainly do that if you'd like, we can withdraw this resolution to write up our own concerns at the...
But I would suggest you table it until probably your next board meeting, and let's take the 20th. And if you have questions that you need answered, we'll get your information for the work session.
But I would say, you know, in response to Ms. Nichols' concern, this resolution isn't asking the teachers to stop implementing. And we endorse plenty of resolutions from the, you know, North Carolina School Boards Association, which just gives our feelings on a matter that we need to have more study into these topics and more discussion. And we don't, you know, it's just how we feel. Again, we don't have any statutory authority to stop implementation. So, I think we can pass a resolution just expressing our concerns. I mean, I think as a board, we certainly have concerns, at least around testing, as Dr. Markley pointed out. I mean, I think as a board, we certainly have concerns, at least around testing, as Dr. Marley pointed out. Cost of testing, who's going to bear that cost? We can continuously hear about we, how we don't have bandwidth to do all the computerized testing. And of course, you know, the Common Core standards, I've done some reading on it. And, I mean, again, there's two kinds of knowledge. There's, you know, theoretical knowledge and this experiential knowledge. And, you know, if it were me who was going to start a new curriculum, I would start with one that's been shown to work and I would bring education experts around and say, hey, how can we tweak this to make it better? I wouldn't try to reinvent an entire curriculum and standards. But I mean, you know, I wasn't in charge.
Because these are the history of that, the, as far as testing, what with the ABCs, didn't we then change testing and so forth? Then with No Child Left Behind?
We got through a testing iteration every four or five years.
Now with Common Core, it's a-
And we, we actually have given the first set of assessments related to Common Core already. We gave them last year, is the end of course test and the, and the end of grade test.
But when they can't say how many hundreds of millions of dollars it's going to take to, to do the testing and so forth, then-
Yeah, then for testing, I mean, what, what could you just use? I mean, testing is just going to be a barometer. You know, what, why couldn't you use a, a national norm test that's been used for a hundred years? Like, you know, the Iowa test or the California achievement test. I mean, I understand that people have always knocked our EOCs because they're not as difficult as tests other, other places in the country. Why not just use a nationally normed test? And we've been doing that for high schools. We're going with the ACTs, which are again nationally normed tests. We have to reinvent all the tests?
That's a different discussion.
You gotta, you gotta follow the money. Okay, so I'm hearing that we will table the resolution and that our work session will work on this, in bringing forth something that our next board meeting. Is that, everybody comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, item, let's see, we, we've already got the ice cream.
Got the ice cream.
Item C, Apex Learning Contract, Appendix O dot Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is the computer-based learning program that we use and that replaced NovaNet last year. So this is our second year in the contract. It's a routine ask for approval.
Is this for Mosley? Is this what we're using over at Mosley?
We use this at Mosley. We also use it at our other high schools as well.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
How is it, how is it going with Apex as opposed to NovaNet? Have we noticed a difference?
It's a different product. It does the same thing, but it's a better product. It more closely aligns with the standards and it's a cheaper product.
NovaNet, one of the problems was, well, some, NCAA wouldn't accept credits through NovaNet because they weren't rigorous enough. Apex is a more rigorous program.
Okay, so they accept that?
Yes.
Okay.
Was there some talk at some point with us getting rid of this and just going with, you know, the virtual public schools?
We still use, Virtual Public is, it does most of our online piece. This is primarily at, at Mosley. Because you can use, you can blend this with an adult and the online better than you can with the, with Virtual Public.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item D, Compass Learning Con- Contract, Appendix P, Dale Pelsey-Bakken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the software that we use in our after-school program and request board approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item E, Head Start Application, Appendix Q, Dale Pelsey-Bakken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the grant that we are applying for, for the Head Start program, and we request your approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
My only comment, and I, I support this wholeheartedly. My only comment is that I was reading this grant proposal that people should, if they have the time, take a moment to look at the proposal abstract. Because, you know, when you start looking at the demographics of these neighborhoods, it's really just amazing, just sort of what we're up against in, you know, public education. Now, and you've heard this from me multiple times, you know, statistically, I mean, I will, I will say that preschool, when, when you carry it out to the third grade level, doesn't statistically improve the academic performance. And I think that's true. And when you look at these demographics, you realize why that's true. I mean, one year of additional learning in this cohort of children. I mean, we, I don't know how anyone expects that to make the kind of lasting difference that we want to see in this group of children. And, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. But I'm saying that we need to do a whole lot more in this cohort of children because, you know, when you look at the economic, the health, I mean, the crime. I mean, just reading through this is, you know, it's really bleak, you know. So anyway, I was just, every time I read stuff like this, I'm amazed at the scope of the, the problem.
You have a comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item F, Addition to 2013-14 Curriculum Guide, Appendix R, Dale Pelsey-Bakken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, we bring the curriculum guide to the board in December of the previous year to give schools an opportunity to work with their students on their plans for the next year. The Marine Science Academy came before you in February, so the curriculum guide had already been passed, it had already been approved. So, in order for this to go in the guide, we needed your approval of adding this curriculum item.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item G, Change Order to Add New Hanover High School to the Contract for High School Track Replacements, Appendix S, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Requested the board approve the change order for New Hanover High School for the track to be a complete replacement. It will give a much longer-term solution for their track.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a question. This is a, it says it's a replacement.
Replacement versus repair. This will, this will allow us to replace it rather than repair it.
All right, my question is this. If I remember correctly, and if I'm wrong again, correct me. An issue came up when we built, this is the track behind Williston, is that correct? When that track was built, as I understand it, or as I recall, it is not a full track. It is not a quarter mile.
That's correct. That's correct. It's not. It's still used heavily and used for practice, but it's not a, an official-
So, so Hanover does not have a competitive track?
That's correct.
So where do they compete?
I'm sorry?
Well, I'm saying where, where do they compete? Where do they compete?
They have to go elsewhere, I guess. I mean-
They go on a regular track, at Hoggard or Laney or, I'll, I can find out from, for sure. And I'm not sure, maybe Rick knows where they compete exactly.
Let me tell you about a track coach. He coached track for a number of years and never had a track. That was me. At Laney, we didn't have a track for years.
Now you got a nice one.
Now you got a nice one, yeah. Right adjacent to Holiday Stadium.
We can end that after. I second the motion.
What we were looking at though is, is that we, we did, we used, the only had one track in the county at the time, that was Hoggard's track, and that was where the softball fields are now. So all the county schools use that track and, and you used it for meets as well as, as, as practice occasionally. New Hanover has that facility. They have the jumping pits and all that. So they have a facility to practice, which is good, but their meets are all away.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and that's, you know, I, I understand that the issue was that in order to build them a legitimate track, that they could have home competitions on, it would impact the football practice field with the Jap Davis facility.
We discussed it at the time, if you recall, and the decision was made to build it like it was and not put in a, a competition track.
But is that the reason? Because there's not enough space?
It would have, it would have, right. You didn't, it was a space issue at the time and what you would give up in order to create that. And it was decided, the board had a discussion on it, and it was decided at the time not to, not to do that.
Well, you know, some, some of the members of the board decided not to do that.
Right.
You know-
If you recall, until Ashley was built, there was no high school in New Hanover County which had all of the athletic facilities that were required for one high school. You put everything we had together and you didn't have enough for one high school.
I understand that, but we have eliminated a lot of that. I mean, for example, I know Hoggard and New Hanover used to share Legion Stadium. But then we built Hoggard Stadiums and gave them a track and, and everything. Now-
Slowly we're getting there.
Well, I mean, my, my question becomes, is there still a reason that we could not put a competitive track at New Hanover?
Yeah, you couldn't put it, I don't think you can put it there, but without completely looking at the, tearing up the whole site. There's an elevation difference in the site. There's, there's all kinds of problems with that particular site. It would be an issue and it would cost more than just to change order to repair what you have.
I mean, you know, I, but I mean, if we, if we're, that track is not, as I recall, of course, I, you know, I guess I've been on the boards a while, and that track's, what, ten, twelve years old?
I would, I would have to look. I think it's, I think it's older than that. Eddie, do you know how, how old it is?
Um, the thing I want to point out there is that this doesn't replace, this is the track that's-
I understand.
But it's not, to, to replace the track on a farm track is significantly different from what we're talking about with the change.
Right.
Now, I'm just, I'm just interested in, in us trying to come up with a way that all our high schools have, have the opportunity to have competition as a home event. And, you know, I, I know for so long there was a complaint from the Hoggard people that they had to actually come play at Hanover's facility when they were playing at Legion Stadium. And then we spent, what, three million, three and a half million dollars and built them a stadium and gave them that nice track that they've got and all. And, you know, I don't know whether it's the case that, I know one of the problems obviously was the fact that the football field, it was a concern that it would impact the football practice field. Well, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm a, I love football. But, you know, I don't know that you have to have a hundred yards in a practice field. Maybe you do, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to raise the, the, the concern that I have that it would be nice if we could figure out a way to give all our high schools comparable facilities. And I know, you know, we have heard from, there has been one high school that has complained a great deal that they said they don't have comparable facilities. But, you know, in all actuality, they probably have better facilities than some of the other high schools have. So anyway-
And this is not the, I think you're making a good point, Mr. Higgins, because this is not the only area. I mean, where does Hanover, for example, play their home softball games?
Yeah, right. The softball games are home at, for New Hanover, are played at Hoggard.
Right, at Hoggard. You know, that's what I, I've said for years in that, and we try to be fair to all our schools, but anything Hanover does, they have to get out and go get on a bus.
Well, I, I think, I think we need to get with the city again and see if we can't work out something about, what is it, Robert Strong?
Strange.
Strange across the street from Williston about, I mean, that's, that's where I think they used to play, wasn't it?
Yeah, but there were some Title IX issues where they're not-
It was a Title IX issue.
Yes, Title IX issues.
Disparity between Robert Strange and Legion Stadium where the baseball team played, they just went.
Well, that's the reason I said, I mean, you know, maybe we need to get with the city and, and get with the mayor and the members of the city council. And, I mean, New Hanover's a downtown school.
Yeah, they'll make it happen.
Huh?
I'm sure they'll make it happen.
Well, you know, it may be a little bit like Legion Stadium. It may be a joint project that we put up some money, the county puts up some money, and the city puts up some money. And we get them a facility so that they don't have to travel to Hoggard. I mean, they used to have to go out, I think, to Noble or someplace to play, but-
Let me ask you another question. You don't know the answer.
No, I'm talking about softball.
It's not a four hundred meter track. How, how long is the track? Uh, it's, it's, right, it curves around, it's, it's, it's not anywhere near, uh-
It's about an eighth of a mile.
You might get dizzy practicing on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah. It's not anywhere near like a real track. No.
Uh, okay.
Any other comments?
I called a question.
Make it an eighth of a mile.
Oh, we have a motion to second. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item H, Resolution to Select the Design Consultant for Noble Middle School, Phase Two HVAC Improvement, Appendix T, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Requested the board approve the resolution to select the design consultant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we, all the rest are design consultants. You don't take all these at one time? We have John T. Hoggard, Myrtle Road Middle School, E. A. Laney, and, uh, well, we've got the Northeast Elementary School. We'll go, let's just do them one at a time. Item I, Resolution to Select the Design Consultant for John T. Hoggard High School, Phase Eleven B HVAC Improvements, Appendix U, Mr. Hance.
I think that's Phase Two.
Yes, Mr.-
Is that eleven?
I think it's-
Is that phase?
Phase Two, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Phase Two?
Two B.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it is Phase Two.
Move for approval.
See, without, without having the Common Core, you wouldn't know Roman numerals.
And what Roman numerals look like.
Horizontal lines on-
I'm just saying.
As long as they're not cursive, right?
Yeah, well, you couldn't read them, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot about that one.
Uh, any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who was the second on that, for the record?
I think it was me.
Ms. Cobble.
Ms. Cobble.
You're in trouble.
Item J, Resolution to Select the Design Consultant for Myrtle Road Middle School, Phase One HVAC Improvements, Appendix V, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request that the board approve the design consultant resolution.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Yes. I, I probably should have raised this before, but just for information's sake, tell me what a design consultant does for an HVAC program?
He draws, he draws the design. We're required to have, he's a mechanical engineer that creates the design to be bid.
All right, I just want to make sure that people understand that this is not something that we're-
We-
That we are mandated to do this.
We are required to have-
Yeah, it's ridiculous. Rationale for recommendation, General Statute 133 dash 1.1. And I say this every time we do this, because it was a ten percent of every contract. I mean, it's just, you wonder why-
It's, it's a different percentage, it's negotiated amount.
You wonder why we spend so much to republic school construction. I mean, it's just-
We could probably build another school for it, pay for consultants.
Talk to your local legislator. It's embarrassing.
We're on K.
Okay.
We hadn't voted on it yet.
It's hard to say. I didn't think we had voted on that one.
Oh, we didn't.
Then we'll go to K.
There was a motion in the second.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item K, Resolution to Select the Design Consultant for E. A. Laney High School Roof Replacement, Appendix W, Mr. Hance.
Requested the board approve the design consultant for roof replacement at Laney.
Move for approval.
Second.
For General Statute 133 dash 1.1, I agree.
Any other questions, Mr. Higgins? I know you-
No, I, I've got, I've got my, I'm, uh, you know, I, I've decided that roofs and HVAC, I mean, you know, they're just, they're, 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 they're gonna be a never-ending event. As long as I'm on this board, there will be a, I don't, I don't know how we can have a meeting without approving either a roof or a HVAC project.
Yeah, have them both.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item L, Resolution to Select the Design Consultant for Northeast Elementary School, Appendix X, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Requested the board approve the design consultant for the Northeast Elementary School. It would be a clone of Castle Hain.
I have a que- well, we can do it the normal way. Move for approval.
Second.
I'll say a motion second. Now, questions, Dr. Higgins?
Yes, so, recommendation is, this resolution approves LS3P. And they're the same firm that designed Castle Hain. Is that right?
Yes, it's correct.
And so they're going to use the same plans?
They'll side adapt the same plans. You'll have, you'll make- They'll side adapt the same plans. You'll have, you'll make, there may be some changes based on, uh, some ed specification change, educational specification changes or any security changes. Things of that nature would be changed. They would have to side adapt it to a specific site. When you use a consultant like this, we save, we save time and we save money because we get a lower design fee when we do this.
That's what I was gonna ask. What, what do you think they're gonna charge us this design fee?
Uh, we'll have, we'll negotiate it, but it will be less than what we would pay if they were doing a, a new, a brand-new school that's not a reuse or not a clone.
Okay, make sure you get that for the minutes. It's, it's gonna be less. Because one of us is gonna say when this comes before us again, I thought you said this was gonna be less.
It's less than what it would be if it was a brand-new school, yes.
Which means if it was normally 10%, they got it for nine and a half.
That was my next point. This is usually a percentage of the contract.
It is.
The construction costs have increased since we built Castle Hain.
Yeah, so we will.
The percentage will be less. I can't guarantee you that it'll be dollar for dollar.
That's correct.
A less amount.
Right. But we'll be bringing it back. That will come back to you for approval after we negotiate for all of these things. It will come back to you.
To be clear, I was much more comfortable with the Hershey's Ice Cream contract.
I'm, I'm certain.
But it will be based on the Castle Hain model.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's approved. Thank you. Item 12, Call to the Audience on Non-Agenda Items.
I don't see any of them here.
If anyone hung, hung in here, you raise your hand. So, but I won't call these names. Uh, there, because several people did sign up. But if you're here to, for the call to the audience, please raise, raise your hand. I, I don't see any hands, so we will assume they left. Under, next item on the agenda, item 13, Correspondents. Any correspondents that board members want to share?
No.
I have a couple of things I wanted to share. One was to, once again, yeah, Mr. Spencer's here. I wanted to thank Mr. Spencer again for the, uh, safety training that took place, uh, on August the first, uh, down at Mini Evans. And also just to mention, I'm not gonna call any names. I'm not gonna get into that, but the, I was really impressed with the people that were there that conducted the workshops that, uh, that everyone attended. Uh, the National Weather Service, for example, the New Hanover County Emergency Management, New Hanover County Fire Department, New Hanover, uh, Health Department, uh, New Hanover County Sheriff's Department. Lieutenant, I'm really impressed with the, uh, uh, the discussion and, and what the Sheriff's Department, which I'll put on. Enjoyed that and learned a lot. Uh, the North Carolina District Court, Judge Corpening was there. He would have gone the road with his, uh, he, he is very good. Uh, I really enjoyed his comments. Wilmington Fire Department and also the Wilmington Police Department, I think it was been a very beneficial and I think everyone, uh, certainly, uh, learned from that. It was, it was very good. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I mentioned earlier, uh, attend, uh, a lot of meetings and so forth. And Dr. Wilmers and I had the, uh, pleasure of attending, uh, what, several weeks ago now, Congressman McIntyre, what, Educational Summit up at, was it Clinton High School, wasn't it? Clinton High School. And, uh, I made a list of the various topics that the congressman, uh, addressed or just lightly addressed and was seeking input. Uh, I don't know how many counties were there. What, about 10? About 10 counties, uh, superintendents and, and board chairs and so forth were there. And I, I found it to be very informative, uh, and, and just wanted to share with the board that that had taken place, which I think is always good. Uh, no other correspondents? Well, that's the only two I had.
I just want to thank the chair and vice chair for coming to the opening today and Don for making remarks at the principal meeting.
Well, that's true, yeah. Excellent principal meeting this morning. And you're gonna share that information with the full board? When did you say?
Uh, probably in, at the, in the weekly packet.
Okay, because I, I found it to be very beneficial, uh, and informative. I know Mrs. Nichols made some, uh, uh, some comments on that too. I, I thought it was very good, some of those little videos in particular.
Yeah, now, August 20th, I'm gonna do a presentation on all the changes in the state budget and the whole state legislature. There is significant changes in this, uh, in this year's legislative session to include tenure, to include pay for teachers, as well as a number of other topics.
Any other correspondents? Item 14, Announcements. Uh, we will have our work session on Tuesday, August the 20th, 4:00 PM here in the Board Center. Uh, and I want to thank Mr. Hance for giving the Board Center reopened for us that, uh, we're working on it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hance.
I just haven't think about that and I don't know if I want to mention that or not on the start.
Now, now I might start having an issue.
Wait, when you least expect that you're gonna receive some kind of an award or something, so don't be surprised at what might be on the award or whatever.
Here is a word, yeah.
I had to talk to Ms. Quarterbaum about, we'll, we'll come up with something, Ms. Quarterbaum. We'll, we'll come up with something.
State has the order of the longleaf pine. I guess we're gonna have our own?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hazard to think what that might be.
Might have the word varmint in it somewhere. I'm not sure. Uh, so we have a work session here in the boardroom, which I'm glad to be back in, uh, at 4:00 on August 20th. Item B, we will attend, let's see, summer school graduation, uh, this Thursday night, August 8th, 7:00 PM auditorium at Snipes. So, I hope, uh, the board can make that. Item C, uh, our next meeting will take place on Tuesday, September 3rd, uh, at 5:30, uh, here in the Board Center. Any other announcements, anything that needs to be.
We got a notification, September the 6th.
Yes.
We have, I thought it was the 6th. Is it the 5th? The district?
Oh, that's right, district meeting.
On Thursday.
Thursday, oh, is it? Okay.
At Rose Hill, which is in.
Oh, yeah, Rose Hill.
Union High School.
Did everyone receive that, a card? You should have received a card from the North Carolina School Boards.
Through the mail, rather than our.
Right, it should have been mailed to you at home.
Yeah.
From the School Boards Association about district meetings. We're in District Two.
Yeah, it doesn't come to the district.
This year, it's gonna be what, Rose Hill, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. It's a Union High School.
Union High School and Rose Hill.
And for our new board members, what we normally do is, is, uh, we get, uh, transportation together and we go as a group so that, um, we can find it.
Sometimes.
Oh, I'll drive then. That'll be fun. Uh, transportation will get us, uh.
Ms. Z. Step was right, because she's known for her.
She'll, she'll drive. She's known for her, for her funding skills, directional skills, yeah.
Build-in internally GPS.
As long, as long as we're not trying to get to that place up in Kinston.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
I mean, I don't.
Or Jones. As long as it's outside of Wilmington, she's good.
No, Jones, we found okay, but Kinston, that, well, we're in Kinston.
All right, so that district meeting, what, was that again, Ms. Higgins, with the date?
Yeah, she said the 5th. I thought it was the 6th, but she says.
It's Thursday, though.
We'll get some more information out about that and, because generally, like I said, we get a van, we go as a group. Any other announcements? All right, hearing none, we need a motion to go in closed session for personnel. Mr. Board, if you'll cite the statute.
It's Chapter 143, Section 318, Point 11A, 6.
Move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're in closed session.